Okay. I'd like to call to order the Monday, December 6th, meeting of the Algonquin Council. I'd like to have the clerk take the roll, please.
Schmidt.
Here.
Pabek.
Here.
Maverton.
Here.
Lattenbach.
Here.
Piarkey.
Here.
Boer.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Marion.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect that this meeting has been posted in compliance with the open meeting law. Are there any changes to the agenda as published? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Meeting minutes from November 1st and November 16th, we can just combine them. Are there any questions, comments, or changes on any of them? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So, second.
Moved by Steve, second by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Public comment, is there anyone here this evening under public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to bills, general bills and credit card payments. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Any questions on any of the bills?
Yeah, Todd Dart, $913. Lights, batteries, charger.
That's for the fire department, I think, isn't it?
Fire, fire department.
Yeah. I think we've got to work on identifying some of this stuff a little better.
What would you like?
Well, we're getting a name, but we're not getting what department it's being assigned to. And looking at some of this stuff, I'm kind of asking, okay, wouldn't it be better if it had an assigned to a department as opposed to just a name and...
So, kind of like when you see the finance and personnel bills, how you have it broken out, like these are Public Works, these are parks, these are fire, these are police?
Yeah.
Okay, I can work on something like that.
Okay.
It might be like a three-letter code, like APD program, a police department, AFD, Algonquin Fire Department, right before what it describes what it is.
Yeah, that would be great.
It's kind of weird, that one, because it goes to Todd Dart, but Todd Dart is a salesman. So, it makes it look like we're ready to check that Todd Dart.
Right, yes.
He's a salesman for Cat Turner.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not physically paying Todd Dart.
Good question, so. Any other questions on any of the bills? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Casey.
Second.
Second by Lee. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Pabek.
Yes.
Maverton.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports, everybody had a chance to read through those. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one on, for the PPP, the squad car, $60,000 for a squad car.
It's SUV instead of a car.
But you didn't pay, we didn't pay $60,000 for our last SUV.
I think it was up to, the way it was presented, is not to exceed. It was like 54, I believe it was. I'm pretty sure it was 54, 55.
So, we're not going and getting bids on the Charger, the Ford Explorer, and then the other one, and see which the lowest bid is? We're just going to automatically get the $54,000 one?
So, you're going to approve $62,000 so you can pick what you want, instead of getting the bids and then presenting the bids first? This don't make sense.
Well, at finance and personnel, there will be, that'll be on the agenda for finance and personnel. And the directive to the police chief was to present alternatives, including the Durango that was approved at the PPP, but there will be alternatives as well. For example, a Charger, a Ford Explorer, for comparison.
There's no action on this tonight.
Correct, there's no action on this tonight. It'll be at the finance and personnel on the 21st.
Okay.
Any other questions of any of the other reports? Okay, hearing none, then I'll accept the motion to approve the receipt of the committee reports.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, thank you. We have no old business, but we do have a few things on new business tonight. Item A is moratorium on enforcement of political sign ordinances. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if you had a chance to read in your agenda packet, I put together a memo on this subject last week at the regular meeting of the PPP. There was petitioner Laura Kreschak, attended the meeting and cited a couple of concerns that she had with our sign ordinance as it relates to political signs and our enforcement thereof. She had two concerns. One of them was she believed that there was unequal enforcement of the ordinance, but as I explained, that is more coincidental, as we are driven, it's complaint-driven. So, we are not proactively going out and looking for signs that are in violation. If we receive a complaint, we address it then. So, anytime that there's interaction with a property owner regarding a sign that's not in compliance, it's strictly due to a complaint received and their willingness to work with us on that. Just to be clear, we've never confiscated, nor have we actually ever cited anyone for a violation. I just want to make that clear. But the bigger issue, the concern that she brought up, was regarding the constitutionality of our sign ordinance at all. And she cited a case, Reed v. Town of Gilbert, from 2015. It's a Supreme Court case. She said that our ordinance is not in compliance with that. And so, then she asked that the city look at our ordinance and determine the constitutionality of our ordinance, and in the meantime, that we effectively enact a moratorium on enforcing our political sign ordinance. So, the PPP took that into consideration, and that's what you have before you here tonight, is to consider placing a moratorium on that. For my part, I read the Reed case. I have it right here from the Supreme Court, the majority opinion and the concurring opinions from the justices. I believe that there is certainly enough questions that are raised by it with our code that I do have some concerns that I want us to look at and evaluate. And as such, we will then bring to, regardless of what you decide here tonight on a moratorium, we'll bring to the PPP at their next regular meeting, a recommendation on changes, or if it's found that we are in compliance with Reed, that there wouldn't be any changes. But that'll be brought to the PPP at their next meeting and then the subsequent steps, if necessary, after that. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions. But what we're looking for here tonight, if you want to place a moratorium, would be just for section 113-229 subsection J. That is specific to our political sign, political and campaign sign ordinance.
Mayor, typically when you want to place a moratorium, is that going to be term?
So, and I'm glad you brought that up. That would be my recommendation, is that if the council were to place a moratorium, that you do a sunset provision on it. So, you say, we'll have a moratorium until X date, and it would have to be re-upped, if you want it to keep going. That would be my recommendation. You don't have to do that, but that's what I would recommend.
And basically, a moratorium would, for all intents and purposes, would stop that code from being enforced?
Correct.
Even though, to date, there's been no enforcement?
Correct. The, what we have done thus far, to the extent that we have enforced it, is we are notified or receive a complaint about a violation, a member of the police department makes contact with the property owner and says, your sign is in violation, please take it down. And thus far, everyone has done just that, when they've been asked to. So, that's why when I said before, we haven't issued any citations, everyone's complied when asked to remove a non-compliant sign.
And regarding a sunset provision or a date, this obviously does need to get, I believe, the intent was to run this past legal. What would you recommend as far as a date? Is it two months, one month, two months, three months?
So, I'm just playing this forward, the timeline in my head. The next PPP meeting will be in January, the end of January. And so, you have a PPP meeting, if you have any code changes, it would go to finance and personnel in February and then council in March. So, just for simplicity, you might want to say the end of March.
There's no PPP in December?
No.
No.
I had some concerns, and I had intended, attended that PPP meeting as an observer. There are a couple of things here that just struck me as, as, I, just a bit off, if you will. Our code, is my understanding, is based on Wisconsin statute. So, the issue, and it starts out, authority, this section is adopted under the authority granted by Wisconsin statutes, chapter 62 and 66. So, we took the verbiage out of those chapters and applied it to our code. The issue isn't with our statute, the issue is with the state. And I don't know whether we really need to get into a First Amendment or any other kind of spat, when all we're doing is establishing and following state guidelines. If they have an issue on a First Amendment violation, they ought to be talking with the state. And as, as, so, as far as a moratorium goes, I would not recommend doing any sort of moratorium, because then you're going to, that basically establishes a free-for-all. Then you've got, then you've got open season on whatever anybody wants to put up in regard to signage. They had initially begun their statement declaring that they had put up a four-by-four sign, 16 square feet. That was the second sentence of Ms. Kreschak's presentation. Had that sign been ordinance compliant at eight square feet, it would have met the ordinance and then nothing would have been done. But we're being told that that is a First Amendment violation. I don't believe Mrs. Kreschak is an attorney. She may cite something, but the reading of the law does require some sort of expertise, irrespective of what somebody's opinion of that reading is. Then lastly, if we are going to do this, I would suggest contacting the league attorneys in Madison and find out what their position is in terms of the legality of 62 and 66, as opposed to talking with our city attorney, because we are dealing with a constitutional issue. You know, Jim isn't going to, isn't going to want to touch that with a 10-foot pole. And we follow their advice, as opposed to just kind of flying off the handle and establishing a moratorium so anybody can do what they want to do, simply because somebody was complaining about an oversized sign and they were requested to take it down. That would be my take on this thing. And I can understand, it's frustrating. Yes, you want to get your, you want to get your voice out. But a moratorium, or essentially a free-for-all, is not the way to do it. We've got moratoriums on police all over this country, and we've got some nutty things going on as a result. So, I suggest that we slow this down a little bit, and let's find out what the state's position is through the league's attorneys, and then come back and take another look at this thing.
John?
Yeah, you know, ordinances are our local laws, state laws are state laws. There's nothing that says that we can't both end up on the business end of a First Amendment lawsuit. So, I think we still need to do our own due diligence in looking at what our ordinance says, even though it's rooted in state law, we can't go and embrace state law if the state law is wrong. So, I think we still need to take an independent look at it, to make sure that we are safeguarding, you know, the cities.
I couldn't agree more, and I believe that's what I suggested we do.
Okay. Casey?
Wasn't the reason why it was cited was because it was 45 days or beyond 45 days? That's what I believe Randy had clarified in the, in the meeting. It was not about the size of the sign, but the days.
That's not my recollection, but that is entirely possible. My understanding was that it had to do with the size.
Okay. Could we get clarification on that? Just for, I mean, not immediately, but for my personal curiosity. Also, I mean, I appreciate the consideration, Jake, the reservation, because it is, you know, a state statute. But we've seen other communities, there are, this isn't the only time that a individual community has been taken to court on this issue. And so, regardless of whether or not it's the state that overrules it or determined it, doesn't mean that, like John, to John's point, that we won't end up also in litigation. And I don't know if the comparison of moratoriums on policing behaviors is necessarily apt to a sign regulation. I mean, this is a reflection of a First Amendment speech. And I get the analog you're trying to pull, but I think that there's probably, point taken, but it's on a different level. And I don't think that the free-for-all that you would experience is any different than the current state that we have established, where we don't enforce it. And the only enforcement we have is when we make a, or complaint is made, right? So, I mean, I don't see it becoming like, hey, it's the Wild West, because people who were engaged in that particular manner already will continue to be, and people who weren't engaged, I don't think this is going to inspire them to some great tyranny or some extravagant, you know, outrage. So, I, you know, I think it's wise that we look into it. There's plenty of other cases that I've read about that could suggest perhaps we are out of compliance. I think it's worth looking into it. And since we don't follow up with enforcement beyond saying, please take it down, I think it's kind of moot. You know, I mean, we could not do it and the same thing would happen, but we might as well make it official if we're going to be pursuing further, you know, exploration of the particular ordinance changes. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
And just to reiterate something that the administrator did state before in his statement, that there has yet to be any signs confiscated or any type of fines. And regarding this specific instance, the signs are already put back up, so. Whether or not we do a moratorium tonight or not, I don't think that that's going to change. So, I would tend to agree with, yes, it does need to be looked at. I would tend to agree with Jake. I don't think we should rush to conclusions. Whether or not we put this in effect tonight, next month, two months from now, it is something that we should definitely look into for the long, long-term, not short-term.
Any other comments? Or is that the consensus of the council to not do anything at this point? And then basically, research with the league of municipalities and go on doing a little more research? Or does somebody want to make a motion to implement a moratorium?
I'll make a motion to implement a moratorium.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? The motion dies for a lack of a second. You had a question?
Can you email us the name to the Reed case?
Sure. Do you want the formal, okay.
Okay.
One question. If the sign would have been the size of our ordinance, then would it have been asked?
I didn't hear you, Kevin.
If the sign would have been the sign's size that's allowed, then there would be no issues, right? She's just bigger than what we allow? Is that your consensus? Assuming that, that the recollection that Jake and I have is accurate, that that's what the complaint was. Oh, okay. It could be, to Casey's point, it could be that it was a timeline issue. Either way, the...
Like a clinical sign over the timeline, like a presidential plan?
Right, because we only allow them for some 45 days prior.
Oh, okay. And now it's back up anyways?
It is back up.
But we only authorize so many days after the election as well?
Correct.
It's not just before, it's also after.
Correct. I mean, irrespective of that, it wasn't violation of the size. Whether or not that was what drove the complaint or not, it was twice as bad.
But now it's back up, so it would be another new complaint if somebody calls.
Yeah.
Well, and it is for everybody's edification, Ms. Kreschak raised, well, so-and-so has a sign up, and so-and-so has a sign up, and so-and-so has a flag up, and so-and-so. And we're not seeing any, anybody making them take it, take them down. I think that was, that was possibly a slight misunderstanding insofar as a police officer or a police department isn't going to tell you who's got complaints filed against them or not. So, it really, if somebody's got a sign up that they don't particularly care for, and they say, well, they get to keep the sign up, why do we have to take ours down? They don't know whether there's a complaint about that particular sign or not, because a police department doesn't discuss that sort of thing. That's between the police department and those folks, not everybody else on the planet. So, it just is kind of, you know, there's discretion. You look confused, John.
Yeah, I thought police activities were part of public record.
It is public record unless they put anonymous. Then their identity can be hidden if it's put anonymous. But otherwise, if Jake Marion calls up about Casey and say, I don't like having his dog on my lawn, it's public record. You could get those records of that CAD call that would show Jake as the complaint. Now, if Jake says, I want to be anonymous, then no, they can't tell you who that Jake was. But I mean, you could figure it out if you know the neighbors, depending on what the caller. Where is this sign located, on her property?
No, it's on somebody else's property. And she was here ostensibly speaking for somebody else.
For the owner of that property?
For the owner of that property.
Okay. So, the property owner isn't complaining, it's her as the friend.
As far as I know, the property owner did not show up.
Okay.
Ms. Kreschak did, and she had somebody with her as well.
Now, with city ordinances, you don't make a CAD call per se with like dispatch, but Randy would have the records for that, and you could get public records. You could get public records.
Yes, okay. About that specific, who complained?
Yeah.
Okay.
This complaint, this date, this time, this, what this complaint is.
And there is in fact a complaint there?
About that sign, yes. And she's aware of that. But I, my point is, is that she wouldn't necessarily be aware about any other complaints, unless she would go through and do a record search, I guess, would be the way to figure that out. But Randy wasn't forthcoming with any, you know, well, so-and-so got to keep their sign up. He, he said, you know, he essentially pled the fifth. He did, he said, there have been other complaints about other signs.
Right.
But he did not get into specifics about what signage those complaints were about.
If and when there's complaints, he's going to respond to them just the same as he had? And I would expect that and nothing less.
Right. Pretty cut and dry. One example, if I could, following the general election last year, there were still some, some signs up that were not in compliance. They were past the timeline following the election. And we received complaints about those. They were signs for the former president. And they were after the timeline, we received complaints. Randy made contact with both property owners and they each removed their signs at that time. So, you know, it's complaint-driven. When we get a complaint, if I get the complaint, I notify Randy, or if he gets it directly, he goes and meets with the property owners and addresses it there. We've been fortunate in that property owners have not defied the request, so we haven't had to cite anyone.
And that goes for all signs, you're not just saying the election signs?
Right, those are just the ones that we get complaints about, though. No one complains about the rummage sale sign this weekend. They're going to complain about Governor Evers' sign, or a Trump's sign, or the hot button.
I just specified because there has been complaints years ago for the one for God, you know, I for God's sake, Christ is part of Christmas or something. And there are people complaining because it was in your yard, and I don't want that. So, to specify, it's not just election signs, it's any sign that's there, you're only allowed so long, and that's it. And if there's a complaint, well...
One more thing, how do we define political sign? You said election sign just now, and, no, no, but I think it's an important distinction. So, part of what they had also said when they were here, and they were here speaking on behalf of the Good Nurse, and they had noted that also at a particular time. She had referenced it being a sign in support of the governor.
Yep.
Right, how do you define, what's the difference between a sign supporting an election versus a sign that just says, I support our governor?
Mm-hmm. So, specifically our code, subsection J, political and campaign signs. Signs on behalf of candidates for public office or measures on election ballots, provided that such signs are subject to the following regulations. And then we get into the timeline and the size.
So theoretically, if I had a sign that said, Tony Evers, or Joe Biden, or Donald Trump, or whatever, just that, I mean, does that fit under there? Just a sign of, statement of, I support, I support our sitting president, I support our sitting government?
Depends upon how restrictive an interpretation you would apply.
Because there are other signs too, right? I mean, we care about things as that political, I mean, it's a curious thing, and I don't want to get, I won't get too far into it, obviously, we're going to pursue this, but, you know, like, what is political, what isn't political? You know, for there's...
Yeah, it all depends on how much emphasis you place on the part of the sentence, on election ballots. So, is it just in support of people who are on a ballot? Or is it any elected official, regardless of their status of being on a ballot or not? I don't like that question.
Hopefully, we'll find some answers.
Yeah, unless there's any other questions or comments, I think we'll move on. I think you've got your marching orders on what we should do, and we'll come back and see what interpretation we have. Okay, let's go to resolution 1092-2021. That's the 2021 budget amendment. There was only one change that Amber had mentioned to everybody before the meeting, and that had to do with the fire department. I think it was on machinery, was that the area?
Equipment repair, wasn't it?
Equipment repair, that changed slightly. But everything else that is in front of you tonight is what you have seen when we had the public hearing, and we basically recommended that the council adopt the budget.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Lee. Any other questions or comments? Since it is the budget, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Maverton.
Yes.
Pabek.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next resolution, and that is basically resolution 1093-2021. That's amending the fee schedule. And if I remember correctly, when I read the minutes from Public Works or Marina, there was an adjustment there, correct, Matt?
Yes, our price per foot for our seasonal slip holders went from $65 to $66 a foot, so it went up a dollar per foot for our seasonal slip holders. And gas went up five cents on both sides. So, it'd be five cents extra per gallon, and also, if you paid by credit card, I believe it was...
Five cents.
Thirty and 35?
Forty, forty and forty-five and like...
It was 40 and 45, no? It was forty and forty-five, now it's forty-five and fifty.
Right.
But those were the only two changes as far as the fee that we looked at before, so just wanted everybody to be aware of that. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved by.
Whatever, it don't matter.
Moved by Lee, second by John. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution one zero nine four dash twenty twenty-one, pickup truck purchase. This here, I think we talked about this at the Finance and Personnel Committee, and to make a long story short, with our, under our contract with Suez, we are required to provide a pickup truck for Suez to be used down at the wastewater treatment plant. The current truck that they are using is a two thousand and five GMC Sierra pickup, and evidently, it's shot. So we are looking to purchase a new truck, but the monies would be coming out of this year's, the funds we left over from the Sixth Street project, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt?
Funds from my budget.
From your budget?
From snow removal over time, that was left over from the twenty twenty-one budget.
So this is not going against capital outlay for next year? So he approached us, we had a lengthy discussion, and the idea of the van was was not accepted, so we looked at a pickup truck. So that's what's on the agenda tonight is to, and I don't even know if El Goma Motors is trying to find you one, or you can comment a little bit more.
Just want to talk to that so everybody is aware. After this went through Public Works, and then it went to Finance and Personnel, a motion was made that we buy another GMC pickup truck, regular tab, eight-foot box. I looked at ordering one. El Goma Motors couldn't give me a a time of when we would receive that truck, but he does have one coming in, a twenty twenty-two, that is, meets all the criteria, but for it is blue, it is not white. So it'd be identical to the Parks, the last truck that the Parks got, that color blue. I believe the utilities has one, it said, I guess, dark blue is what I'm going to call it. Is there an objection to that? That would be here on their lot the week of the thirteenth at El Goma Motors here this month yet.
This vehicle requires a tommy lift out of two, doesn't it? And is that a separate issue from the ordinance or purchase of the vehicle?
Yes, so what we would do is, we would take, what we're planning on doing is taking the tommy lift off of the current truck, the two thousand and five, and putting it on the twenty eighteen, and that will, truck would then go down to Suez.
And that's that's what I thought we discussed.
Yeah.
What's the cost of this truck?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty-five thousand two fifty.
Didn't we discuss twenty-eight thousand? Why do I remember that number?
That was a state rate, wasn't it?
That was SUV that we talked about back in Public Works.
I was gonna say SUVs, SUVs were cheaper than a pickup truck. I make a motion to approve the pickup in in the blue.
Second.
Motion made by Lee, seconded by Kevin to purchase that truck in blue. Is there any comments or discussion? I I I'm just throwing this out. The only the only problem I have with that is, all of a sudden, we're we're helter-skelter with the colors of our vehicles. You know, I know we made an exception for the Parks and Rec, and it's kind of nice if everything is kind of just like our trucks, our dump trucks, everything is orange, so everybody knows it's the Public Works Department. The same thing, we try to stay with the same color for all our other fleet that we have up there, is all white. And I understand that, you know, he can get that truck on the lot this month, but it's, correct me if I'm wrong, the truck that, right now, that way, that Suez is using is the one that the Park and Rec has, that's not being used all winter.
That is correct. They have a red truck, so this is not an emergency, and that's why this blue truck is, just happens to be a blue truck that he has ordered as an inventory truck that's finally coming in.
What what happened with the guys with the state contract in Madison that you had your spreadsheet?
This is the same, so you go out for state bid, there's a number that they have to use.
Okay, yeah, I mean, but you could get a white one from them by spring, you would think, or something like that, or who knows?
We called to talk to the the state, we're, there's dealers that have the state contract that you can get directly from them. They have actually one sitting on the lot, and they won't sell it to us.
Can we trade them a blue one?
I don't have a blue one to trade them.
They'll make more money selling it privately, so they won't give it to you from the state.
Theoretically, a dealership doesn't make any money on a state contract. They're more or less, get the credit of a sale, is what they get.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, and this is maybe a better suited question for the treasurer, but is there any financial gain for getting that purchase bought and paid for by the end of this year versus waiting into next year? I, okay, I didn't.
I don't believe there is. I think the money is, will roll over.
It can still be set aside in earmark.
As long as they roll it over and.
That's why I asked, I told him to hold off on ordering the white one. It was, I think, last week, when he told me about this blue one, I said, don't order the white one, I'll see what they want to do. It doesn't bother me, I'll be completely honest. I think I'm going to probably err more with what the mayor had said, and it'd be nice to keep them all white, but.
Well, Matt, why don't we just hold off and wait for a white one?
I mean, and Jeff did say, because it's a fleet vehicle, he thought it would turn out probably faster than some of these other vehicles, but there's no guarantee with that. Like, like Jeff said, at El Goma Motors, it's kind of out of our hands. I'll order the truck, and they change from day to day with what they tell us, so.
Pete, how long have you been waiting for yours?
We ordered it end of September.
Did they tell you ETA yet?
It's built.
It's built, sitting there waiting for a chip?
Well, sitting there waiting to get here.
Okay, well, there is a motion on the floor, so to order, to purchase the blue truck from from El Goma Motors, and the cost of.
You want me to amend it? I didn't think the blue would be that big of a deal, but I understand where you're coming from.
Sure, why don't you amend it?
Kind of nice to keep them uniformity.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I'll amend my motion to purchase, and we can order the white one.
What?
Go ahead, do it.
Okay, I guess we can, we can go that route, and the motion by Lee is to amend the original motion, and Kevin seconded to order a white vehicle from El Goma Motors, not to exceed, is this not to exceed the price?
I believe that's the way you have it written, is that correct, Jared? It will change a little bit. The the difference between a white truck and about any other color truck is, when you go from white to any other color, it's a five hundred dollars upcharge, just because of the cost of white paint.
Great.
So it's going to be a fifteen hundred?
Yeah, nothing would change but for the color.
Because that's specifically spelled out GMC Sierra fifteen.
The only thing that's going to change would be the color, and it'd be five hundred dollars cheaper, actually, to go, to stay with white.
Okay.
So we have a not to exceed amount of thirty-five two fifty.
Okay, and Lee, you amended your motion?
Correct.
And Kevin, you second that? Okay, so then, are there any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Resolution one zero nine five dash twenty twenty-one, and that is election officials. There's, there's a list that the clerk puts together of people that are going to work for our elections. As you can see, everybody had a copy of it in there in the agenda, and it's also on the screen right now, if you're looking at, and we need to approve a recommendation for those individuals.
Moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Leah. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Thank you. So update on redevelopment area number two. I emailed the the council on this, and the RDA on this last week, but for the benefit of the people at home. Estranga, who is the contractor working on the abatement and demolition of the city-owned property at five twenty-one Fifth, they began their abatement late last week, and they're beginning demolition this week. Today, as a matter of fact. So that's, we're totally in compliance then with the. Oh, did they not start today?
Because of the winds today, and they're projecting the high winds, they're actually not going to start until tomorrow morning. But they still have the same, yes, this week. This schedule is just going to be bumped back, they still expect to be out of here by the end of the week, completed and backfilled. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, no, not a problem. So we're nonetheless, we're on track, though, to meet those deadlines of by the end of the year. Well, we're already, actually, we've already met that goal. And we've sent letters out, they've gone out to the property owners regarding getting the appraisal process, there are the relocation specialists to make contact with them. So the next step will be getting the appraiser in the property when they set that, the property owner sets that up with them, and then we start the negotiation phase. So I'll keep the the RDA and the council apprised of the updates there. Couple weeks ago, I emailed the council, we're getting a grant application that I submitted, and I want to thank thank Matt for his help on this. He's the one who brought it to my attention. There is, through the state of Wisconsin, there's a tourism capital grant through the ARPA monies that the state received from the federal government. And this is for pretty specific things, it was for communities impacted by COVID-nineteen with tourism. So we, we didn't have a whole lot of time to put anything together, but we thought about, well, what could we, what could we do that would be possibly eligible? And so we knew that some time ago, a couple years ago, there'd been discussion on putting new facilities out on the beach for restrooms and cleaning station and potentially concession stands. So we threw together some estimates real quick and submitted that, and the total of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We should know the results of that within the next probably week and a half, and so I'll be able to provide an update on that soon, and hopefully, we could even have some, if we are awarded it, have some action to be taken later this month at Finance and Personnel potentially. So I will keep you posted on that. Unfortunately, before the Thanksgiving holiday, we had some vandalism at Perry Park. There was some unfortunate graffiti that was applied to our playground, so we we closed it, closed the park to the public until we could resolve that. We were, however, able to reopen it last week. Thanks to the Public Works Department, they were able to remove the the graffiti from the the playground equipment. The the challenge was that, because it was on the slide, we had very limited options on how to to get that graffiti off without basically damaging the slide such that it would no longer function properly. Fortunately, though, like I said, we were able to get that off and and maintain the integrity of that, and and so we are back open there. There was a request that we discuss potential surveillance solutions and then things of that nature, so that will be on a forthcoming agenda to talk about, things we can look at to deter that from occurring again. Housing update here, at the last council meeting during the administrator's report, I talked about how housing was becoming a priority for the county and also the municipalities within Kiwanee County, specifically focusing on middle-class housing. I have had a follow-up meeting with the county administrator on this, and so we, it was just a very high-level meeting where we just talked about big-picture goals and and working together towards that. That being said, we are going to be having recurring meetings here as we actually start to fine-tune some specific ideas and and projects. So that'll be coming down the pipeline here in twenty twenty-two, and I'm pretty excited about some of the possibilities we have there. So we'll, we'll keep that going forward. So I'm very excited about that, because as you know from my previous comments, that's definitely something that I believe is a huge priority for us, is increasing our middle-class housing stock. Property tax bills are going to be mailed out this week. We'll be collecting property tax payments here at City Hall through the month of January. Any property tax payments we receive prior to the end of the year will be credited for this year, if you want to do that for tax return purposes. We will be open on New Year's Eve until noon, as we have always done, just for the folks at home. And I have a couple of additional items here that were not in the report, but I wanted to make note of. The first one is, we have posted the Recreation Manager position, and we are accepting applications for that through business, January third, the office is closed that day, but we'll still, we can get them by email. That's, that's fine if they get submitted that way. And the other item here, I wanted to thank a couple of people specifically for our Breakfast with Santa event that occurred this last weekend, particularly Erin and Kathy with the the library, they did an outstanding job, as well as Amber helped decorate a little bit down there as well. But really, to be able to put that together as quickly as they did, and it was very well attended, we had fifty-five kids show up to that, very well attended, and and went really well. So I I just wanted to have a special comment and commendation for that. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Erin to go over some some updates she has.
Thank you. So City Hall will be closed for the following dates for the upcoming holidays. We will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh, along with the thirty-first and January third. On the thirty-first, as the administrator had mentioned, we will be open from eight to noon for tax collection. The other thing that I have is for the elections. We went through this at Finance and Personnel, but for incumbents that do not wish to seek reelection in the spring, please file the non, the notification of non-candidacy, the EL one sixty-three, they're due by December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. For anyone interested in running for office in the spring twenty-two election, December first was the first day to circulate nomination papers. The Declaration of Candidacy, the EL one sixty-two, and nomination papers, EL one sixty-nine, are due by five PM on January fourth, twenty twenty-two. I do have packets pre-made up in my office, I can also email them, and they are on our website, should you choose to get them off of there. If anyone is interested in becoming an election worker, please contact me, and I will hook you up with that.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Any questions of the administrator at this point? Hearing none? Okay. Mayor's appointment this evening, I do have a vacancy, I actually going to have two vacancies on the Med Center Board, and I did get a okay from this individual. I'd like to appoint Betty Kroll to the Med Center Board. Betty's a former employee there many, many years ago, she was in RN, the residence of El Goma, her husband was a former school teacher. So I would like the council to approve my appointment of Betty Kroll to the Med Center Board.
Do we have a spelling on that last name?
It's K-R-O-L-L.
So moved.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Kevin. Any questions? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'm hoping to have another appointment to fill the vacancy of Marge Rodrian, who, Marge and her husband Scott, they sold their home, and they will be leaving the city of El Goma. So I have another individual that I'm waiting to hear back from, and hopefully, I can fill out that board. One other thing that I need to just announce, that coming up on December fifteenth at seven PM, of course, the community band is holding their Christmas concert in the grade school auditorium. If anybody has any time that evening, it starts at seven PM. I know they always appreciate getting a nice turnout, but they do an excellent job, so again, that's December fifteenth at seven PM. That's all I have for this evening. The next meeting date, of course, is January fourth. Agenda items for the next meeting, please get them to our clerk or to our city administrator, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by John. Second by Leah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.